Good evening, everyone. And welcome. It's a rainy evening. Two meetings this evening that we're going to have. The first meeting will be our annual board reorganization meeting where we will be welcoming our new board members. And then our second meeting this evening will be our regular December workshop meeting that precedes the voting meeting. Our first order of business is to elect a temporary president. Temporary president will preside over -- hold over members of the board with -- by hold over members of the board to preside over the nomination and election of a new president. And the secretaries shall act as our secretary for that meeting. At this time, I'll accept a motion to elect a temporary president. Objectively, the Council of School Board is preside over the nomination election of a new president.
A nominee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Is there any -- or are there any other nominations? This is temporary president, and he needs to fulfill that process. You okay?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Bender.
So our first step is to...
Yeah.
Okay. That's right. We read the certificates of election of our new members, pursuant to section 402 of the Pennsylvania Public School Code. I hereby call for the new members of the board to come forward and present their certificates of election. Please come forward. McGlendon, Hunter Aaronz, and Jasmine Hacker. I direct that the secretary list the names as I've read them as illegally... Legally, yes. Legally elected new members of this board into the minutes of this meeting. Judge Fegley, would you please come forward to administer the oath.
Are there any new members who have already taken and subscribed to the oath of the office required by law? Hunter Abrams, please read it after me. I, Hunter Abrams...
I, Hunter Aaronz...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office with fidelity.
Thank you. Is there another final available? Thank you. I, Jasmine Hacker...
I, Jasmine Hacker...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity...
With fidelity.
Congratulations. I, Michelle Stratton...
I, Michelle Stratton...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
The Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity...
With fidelity.
I, Sharon McGlendon...
I, Sharon McGlendon...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity...
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
I, Jerry Galiff...
I, Jerry Galiff...
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
That I will support, obey, and defend...
The Constitution of the United States...
Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
And that I will discharge the duties of my office...
With fidelity...
With fidelity.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
With the new board members, first congratulations.
It's my honor to accept motions nominating for president of the Exeter Township School Board.
Please debate him for Dave Hamberg to be president of the Exeter Township School.
Second. We have a nomination and a second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, we'll go to a voice vote. All in favor of Dr. David Hamburg as the president of the Exeter Township School Board, please say aye.
Aye.
All those not in favor, please say no. Congratulations to Dr. Hamburg.
Thank you very much, and I, it's an honor. And I do want to thank my former board members for the service that they provided and for the guidance, too, which is past year. I hope my stewardship as president was satisfactory, and I'm looking forward to some new faces along the board here. And I think, again, as president, will serve at the pleasure of the board and welcome your feedback and your communication and your action and obviously your support this coming year. At this time, we're going to be accepting nominations for the vice president, and I just want to discuss just one procedural aspect of this is that in the event we have more than one nomination, our process would be to, once all the nominations are complete, we'll close the nominations and then we'll open the floor up for discussion, questions. And after that discussion, we'll vote on the candidates in order that they're nominated. So at this time, I'll accept nominations for vice president.
I'll nominate Hunter. No, I wouldn't nominate. No, 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 I can't. Because I have a conflict because of the treasurer. I nominate Hunter Aaronz. Do we need seconds on these, Dr.?
It's, we can do, we can have seconds. It's not requiring.
Was that requiring? I'm sorry. I would really stick around. Hunter.
Okay, we have two nominations. So are there any additional nominations? Okay, at this time, I'll accept a motion to close the nominations. Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, before we vote, any questions, any comments or questions for, you know, the candidates? I do have a question. I'll just ask each candidate to summarize why they believe that they are qualified to be the vice president of the Exeter School Board, and I'll start with Mr. Aaronz.
I would say the primary thing that I'm looking to bring that may be different than anybody else or maybe similar to other people is that I'm not really focused on being a leader who's going to put people on the line. It's really going to be, and I'm not insinuating that Mr. Brady is either, but I would really like to be a leader that focuses on working to find cohesion and compromise among board members and trying to assess where conflict may have arisen and trying to talk with them and speak with them about that. I think that in the past, the vice president's position hasn't necessarily been one that people think of as important, so to speak, because it has very little real role, but it is something that I think is very important, and I would like to look at changing that grade, a tone that really helps the president set the tone for the board, and that is wanting to compromise cohesion and unity.
Thank you. Brady?
Having served on the board for eight years, I've been able to watch others in that position, how they've served. Like, in addition to that, I've been involved with the personnel committee, involved in negotiations and contracts with our teachers' union. I've also been on the business functions, I'm as well as facilities committee. I think at this point, I have the experience to understand how the board works, and that's why I would like to be the vice president. Not that Hunter couldn't be a very good candidate, but I think that it takes a little bit just to understand the interworkings of how we do things. Thank you.
Hunter, could you explain the three most important issues you think are needed?
You're referring to the ones that I wrote down here?
Number four.
So number four, for those in the public who aren't sure what we're talking about, this time, we tried to do a little bit of a different process and tried to pass around some information ahead of time amongst each other about what candidates would be looking to do. And the three things that I wrote down were identifying our local services and time had to expenditures. In my opinion, one of the big things that I would really like to see happen is that we're unable to identify that dollar goes to this program and understand where the effectiveness of each dollar is being spent and having that tied to program. The second objective within there is trying to create a stable system of assessment so that we're assessing the efficiency and the viability of different programs within the district as related to dollars. I think not only for us, for when we're considering when we want to reduce our expenditures, but also for us trying to verify in our own minds that those expenditures are really working and that they're actually having an impact to students. The third item that I have is trying to create a united front within the board for how we should move forward with our transportation program. I think that there's been a lot of discussion in the public and even in the paper of late about the program that we have and things that we need to consider, and I think no matter how I might feel about that on a policy end, I think we really need to come to a conclusion as a board about that within the next year.
Well, I think prior, when I got on the board, we thoroughly discussed that issue, and there were members of the community came forward with like seventeen hundred signatures that they wanted to keep. They didn't want to privatize the services.
Excuse me, point of order. I don't think we're having a debate on the issue.
Well, I just want, I asked the one who was, and I just want to refer to him, but this is, I want to respond to his thing. I don't think I can, I think that's important.
But I mean, he's the one who's running for office now.
Well, I know, but I am, I am counter, and what I think he doesn't, he doesn't seem to know.
Ms. Page, do you have any additional questions that you have for Mr. Aaronz?
That was my, that was my concern, and I, and why, and also, I have a question. He seems to want a lot of oversight on the board, that we need more, more meetings with the chairmans of the, of the different committees, and we need more committee meetings. Why do you think that's, that is, that is something we should be doing? We joined enough?
So for the first point, is not a concrete opinion of mine that we should privatize the busing service, but I am extremely interested in looking at that. I think that's definitely a path that others are going. But I do want to emphasize that my response and the way that I would conduct myself is not so much that I would be pushing that position doggedly. It would be instead that no matter what the board feels, we need to come to a united front on that. And that doesn't matter whether it's that we choose to maintain our bus food or if we choose to privatize it. And I think that that issue is critical within the next year because it's timely with trying to build another bus center if that's necessary, which personally, I don't believe it is, and I campaigned on that point. But I'm open to listen to every perspective that we have. But I do want to emphasize that as, for my part, as the board vice president, if I were to be lucky enough to be elected, it not be to push one way or the other as the vice president. Maybe as an individual member, I would feel strongly about something, but really to look for a unified vision within the board. To your second question, I think that you were asking, why do I believe that there, it's necessary to have more meetings to provide the oversight? And could I ask a counter question and say, do you think that that oversight is being provided now with just the committee of the whole meetings?
We don't have just committee of the whole meetings. We have, we have committees that, that meet. I had my technology committee last month. Mr. Brady had his during, during the month. I mean, we don't have a committee of the whole and just have all meetings of one after the other.
I fully understand that, and it's not necessarily that the curriculum committee needs to meet more often, or the technology committee needs to meet more often, but how many of the committees have actually met more than once in a year? I think that there are a number of them that the meetings aren't advertised well to the public. There's certainly not meetings that I have been accustomed to, especially when it comes to student functions committee meetings, which is something that I'm very interested in looking at because I have a unique perspective on those issues. And I would just, my concern is that that oversight, not necessarily that there would be any policy change coming from that oversight, but that oversight is necessary. And I think there are plenty of complex questions that we can be proactive about, and it would be better for that to happen at a committee level rather than a committee at the whole level.
Hunter, we do not have committee of the whole meetings.
Just, I might be using the wrong vocabulary, but I meant with the whole board for all nine members. That's what I mean when I say committee of the whole. I apologize.
Any member of the board can come to any committee meeting if we want to know.
Ms. Page, can I please limit the conversation to questions that are associated with the candidates who are running for office?
I would like to speak. One of the reasons why I nominated Hunter, as candidates, Hunter has shown his leadership to us. When we had to make some decisions about speaking up or doing some things, Hunter led our group as, as candidates in ways we should get involved. For instance, in hiring with the assistant superintendent, how we came together and asked if we could please be a part of that and be part of that process. Hunter led that, and he put that together wholeheartedly. He showed his leadership multiple times to me. I've also sat with Hunter at committee meetings where he has shown that he's, he's such a good listener. I can, I've always been concerned about Hunter's age and inexperience, but he's very wise and very mature, and his knowledge is outstanding, specifically about government and education. And I think he would really bring that fresh perspective. I really like Mr. Brady. I like the idea of us having ice cream at our meetings. But, and I also saw Mr. Brady's leadership during the, the facilities meeting. I got to really know him and his personality, and I really liked him a lot. And when I found out Mr. Brady was also running, when I didn't, when Hunter had first stated he would run, it did, it did conflict me a little bit, like, oh goodness. But I think the community has spoken by electing five new members, and I think one of our, our officers should be a new member, and I think that Hunter's up for the challenge as hard as it may be. With Dr. Hamberger and Hunter, I think we have a great governing team here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page?
Yes. So I'd like to say, I think that I was on the board back in 2010 for a brief time, fourteen months. There is so much that we do not know as new members coming on. And you know, you know, you do know a lot, but when you come on this board, you were going to be amazed at what you have to learn. I think, Jim Brady, you said something about, you know, like, how much there is to learn. So I, I think that taking a leadership position along with trying to learn everything that you need to learn is, it would be a challenge. And so I think that you just need to be on, you know, to be on the board, you know, attend the trainings and learn as much as you can before you go into a leadership position.
And Sharon, I completely agree with you. And do you think it takes experience to be wise? I think if there's anyone willing to learn and learn fast and attend any trainings and meetings, I feel like that is Hunter. Again, I respect Mr. Brady, but I, in my conversations with him a bit, and I don't have any good examples, but being in the, being on the board for eight years and reading through his questionnaire and the answers, you know, I feel he's, I feel some of the veteran board members are a little jaded, and I think it's time for a fresh perspective. But I do agree with you, that leadership does take time. If there's one person that I think has that learning curve, it would be Hunter.
And there's something that metacognition, you don't know what you don't know. And so, you know, you can be in the audience, but I'm telling you, when I was, I came on the board, it was a whole year of learning new things about the functions of the board and the role of the board, and so it is, there's just things that you don't, you know, you don't know what you don't know yet.
I promised my last comment. I think that Hunter, if I remember correctly, has been sitting at these meetings since ninth grade. So as much as he wasn't sitting here in these comfy chairs, he's been a part of this board. So I have a question. Being new, I don't want to assume anything. Is there an actual description of what the vice president is responsible for so that we can compare who would be more qualified?
I, there probably is, and I don't know whether we have one available to us at this moment to reflect on that. I know that the position is primarily to support the president and, and serve as president in the absence of the president. I will just say that I served as vice president for one year. And if I can quote Mr. Quinter, who's sitting in the audience, I believe he was fond of quoting Lyndon Johnson, who said that vice president wasn't worth spit. The job really doesn't do a whole lot on this Exeter School Board, and, you know, that's, and I will say, going through the process, I promised that Pat Pigeon that I would support her. She asked me to nominate her. She decided not to run. I spoke with Hunter. I didn't believe that anybody else was going to run. I promised Hunter that I would support him. I have great affinity for Mr. Brady, but I'm not going to go back on my word to Mr. Aaronz.
So then my question to Mr. Brady is, we've heard from Hunter that he, there are things that he'd like to add if he were vice president, which I think were wonderful things that we need. What would you add that may not be in the description or may not have been something that has been done in the past?
I think it's not adding. I think it's more of making sure we follow the commitments that we've made in the past. We haven't gotten there all the time. One of the things I pointed out immediately was I felt that our review process for our superintendent was lacking. I thought that we had not performed in an, out of, in a way that would be representative of a leadership board who would want to be respecting of our leader, our school district. The second thing I looked at was the fact that we have programs ongoing right now that have to continue to get stronger. Our STEM program in the last four years really taken off. I think that the foundation for a 21st century education is to understand where we're going with the foundation where you've been in the past. I think STEM allows you to do that. Logically, the way it's given us that opportunity is we've had our training for our teachers to go out and have that ability to then bring that back to the classroom from our fifth through our 12th grade now. The next thing I looked at is our ever-increasing special education area. We have a $12 million tag on that this year. Every year, it has a little bit more impact. When you look at the, another thing I look at is the demographics of our community. Though we've had a drop in our population of roughly 4,400 to 3,950 over the last eight years, we also have a rise in our free and reduced lunch population. Therefore, the demographics inside of our community are also changing. But while we also look at that change in population, we have to look at, are we providing the right amount of teachers and the correct teachers for our students? And I think it's a challenge to make sure you have the right person in front of the classroom of students, to make sure that they have the ability to succeed. The other thing I look at is the fact that we recently discussed our transgender policy. I think it's going to be an ever, it's going to be more of an issue as we go forward. I think that we have to make sure there's always a, an environment where every child feels that they're safe, where every child feels they feel protected. If I were to look at where our board has been with committees, I felt that our committees have successfully done things in the past, from our curriculum committee, where we guided through the STEM program, we looked at our language programs, our technology committee, where we looked at pulling our Chromebooks and putting them in the hands of our students all the way down through seventh, eighth grade. I think when we look at other programs such as facilities, and we have a $15 million improvement program to start up in the near future, I think that is example where we're moving ahead with that. Our personnel committee does not meet on a regular basis, but it's a as-needed committee. If there's a, if there's a situation that comes up with one of our employees where they have a conflict with a staff member, we have hearings on that to try to help them through that, to see how we can make a decision. Also, we're involved in negotiations, whether it's with this, with the teachers' union or our support staff. With the business functions, it only gets alive in the next couple of weeks, the month, as we go into our time for our budget. So though not every committee will meet continually, those committees do meet when they're needed to meet. I think that you don't have meetings to have meetings if, as you noted, Jasmine, being in my, my facilities meetings, my meetings are very targeted. I have a two-hour time limit because I don't believe you bring people in because you want to have exercises. I think you look at things correctly along the way. This board, as it functions today, I think that we've had a lot of unique personalities that I've been able to deal with over the last eight years. I would say that some individuals, I may not have been necessarily in agreement with their style, but at the same time, I think that we were able to get along enough to be able to deal with the business at hand. I think at the end of the day, when we can leave here, you have to understand that everyone has their own personal position. It doesn't mean they're a good person or a bad person. It means they have a personal belief. You can't hold against them. It's like the person who loves the color white, and you realize it's not a color, but you don't have the nerve to tell them. I think that when you look at this board, it's an interactive group that really looks for one thing, and that's to... for one thing and has to start another. I know it's a little bit more of a topic than you wanted, but I hope that helps you.
Hold question.
Okay, questions being called. Is there any other questions or comments? Okay, we're going to start with first nominee. This is Mr. Brady. All in favor of Mr. Brady being Vice President? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Can I show my hands, please?
See?
That's cool.
Okay, that motion failed. Our next vote is for Vice President for Mr. Aaron's. All those in favor of Mr. Aaron's, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I'm sorry, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 I believe that.
Can we have?
I think it's more of a vote for the no. I think it's just a, you know, you don't vote the yes or no. It's just.
Okay. Show your hands in favor of Mr. Brady.
Aaron's.
Congratulations, Mr. Aaron's. Okay, we'll move on with our agenda. I make a motion, this is item 7A on our agenda, I'm sorry, 6A on our agenda, to set our board meeting dates for 2018. So I move the, accept the dates as listed in our background material for the board meetings for the 2018 school year. Motion has a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. Item 8A, authorize current signatures. I make a motion that the Board Directors authorize current signatures to be official signatures until electronic signatures can be obtained for the 2018 school board officials. Motion has a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A, authorize current signatures. I make a motion that the Board Directors authorize current signatures to be official signatures until electronic signatures can be obtained for the 2018 school board officials. Motion has a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
One no? Motion carries. The next two sections on the agenda, I would move that we table these two sections primarily because we have not as yet had the opportunity, and I have not had the opportunity to meet with the new board members and to discuss either representative assignments or committee appointments. My plan would be to do that within the next two weeks and have appointments and representatives ready for approval at the December 17 meeting. I'll make the motion to table numbers nine and 10 until further date. Second. There's a second and, and the motion has a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I'd just like to make it very clear, and I believe that we received an email today that indicated that the full board would have the opportunity to participate in interviews with the Assistant Superintendent. And previously, it was going to be just members of the Personnel Committee. So as long as the full board is able to attend the second round and the future rounds of interviews, I would support the motion as it stands, but only if the full board is involved in that process.
Like, actually, our board is involved in the second round. Yeah, that's, they have been invited. Now, I will say myself, I'm not available. I had participated in round one, so I don't necessarily have to be there for the second round interviews, but that's the intent. Thank you.
I think all members of the boards should have the opportunity, but if they have conflicts and they can't make it, you know, and then, you know, that's, I don't think that we should stop it until they can.
The intent is to give every board member the opportunity to participate. Is there any other further discussion before we adjourn this meeting? Is there a vote? Well, we have a vote on that? That was just discussion, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay, this is, this is the vote to table.
So just one other question. Do we, do you believe Dr. Hamberger that we will be appointing the committees at the December 19 meeting?
Yes. Thank you. Any additional discussion?
What are we tabling? What are we tabling?
We're tabling items nine and 10 in the agenda. These are the appointments to, for instance, the Berks County Career Tech Center, to an operating committee.
So you want, you want people that are interested in that to contact you or you're going to contact them?
I would be in contact with those people, with everyone, essentially. I'd be in contact with every member of the board to get your preferences and to kind of find out what your areas of interest and strengths are. And then I'll make the assignments for the December 17 meeting. Okay. 19th meeting? Yes, sorry. Hopey, you're on Saturday or Sunday? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. At this moment, I will accept a, accept a motion for adjournment. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, 10-minute break.[872.32]
Welcome. And this is our, again, this is our December workshop meeting where we'll be reviewing the items that will be on the agenda for the voting meeting of December 14th. First item on the agenda is a report from Lorraine Elementary Principal, Mrs. Kristi Howler. Welcome, Mrs. Howler.
Hello. So I...
Press the button. I turned it off. I'm sorry.
Because if you don't mind, I'd rather not use the podium because I'm kind of like an afterperson. I wouldn't see my audience. So welcome to the board. My name is Kristi Howler. I'm the principal at Lorraine. Some of you I know on a personal level because I also have kids in the district. So on behalf of being a parent, I also want to thank you for your service because, of course, you're very happy to be a school district. So I'm sure you had an opportunity to read my report. And for those of you who have been on the board for a number of years, you know that I tend not to then repeat what's in the report, but show some other things that we're very happy about. Although the one thing that I would like to highlight is that Lorraine was given the award of being a high achieving school. And for the next year, I'm not sure how they calculate that because next year, you know, but we're a distinguished school. So of course, the credit goes to our teachers, to our aides, to all the people that make the magic happen at Lorraine. And it's a very exciting place to be and I'm very happy and feel very privileged to be the principal there. So what I'd like to focus on tonight, what I'd like to share with you is something new that we started at Lorraine. I talked a little bit about it in the report, but I think it really needs to be highlighted. We took our student review process, looked at it, evaluated how we were doing with that, saw that there was a need to really address not just academics, but the behaviors that we were seeing. Not that we had students that were naughty, but just that students that needed more assistance in other areas and how we could work to provide that assistance to our children to make sure that they were successful, both in the academics, the behaviors, the social, the emotional, all the things that make you a well-rounded person. So from that, we created a team of teachers, sent many of them for SAC training, and now have a weekly meeting on a Wednesday where we look at students as far as their academics, their behaviors. And then we also meet with teachers about every other Wednesday to focus specifically on behaviors, give them strategies, develop behavior plans as a team, and we believe that that's been very successful. A big part of that, two people on the team that will be with me tonight is Emily Seaburger. She's our school counselor and Laura Crickets, who is our PE teacher. In conjunction to that, we've also been looking at our classroom lessons, how we kick off our year. And so in speaking to Emily, I wanted to become more involved in that. Last year, I had taught a kindergarten lesson, a second grade lesson, and for years I had been doing a fourth grade lesson. But this year, I added a second grade, or first grade lesson, and I also added a third grade lesson. And so I brought the books. So one of them was Fill Your Bucket for the Kindergarten. The other one was One, which was for third grade and talks about the importance of being inclusive, making sure that you're an advocate, you're not a bystander. We talk a lot about that with bullying. In first grade, we did the recess queen, which the kids loved, and we did in conjunction with a bunny bench that had been donated to us by one of our local churches. And in talking to Emily Seaburger and thinking about the comprehensive plan, one of the things that we've talked about is the importance of creating a safe place for kids to learn, but also make mistakes. So in doing some research, we selected two books that we're going to be sharing with our students. We haven't decided on the grade level yet, but the one is about your brain and how your brain works and that it's important to stretch your brain. So even when you make a mistake, that's okay because it's a new learning for you. So this is one.
Why?
Or you can have the girl that never makes mistakes.
There you go.
So we also have the girl that never makes mistakes. And then this story is about a little girl who, everyone tells her she's perfect. And so she's afraid to then make a mistake. And then one day, she makes a mistake and it's almost uplifting, like, hey, you know I made a mistake. It's okay. So The Girl Who Never Made a Mistake is the other book that we're going to be talking about with our students. And of course, that goes along with what we've been talking about with our teachers with the growth mindset and the power of not yet. I just don't get it yet. So that's something that, again, we wanted to share with our students. And Emily has been a fantastic resource to me and so her lessons have been so powerful with our students. So I wanted to have her share a little bit about what she's doing as far as her specific lessons besides what we do together and how we're tying that into real life opportunities for our students.
So hi. Thank you for letting me speak. Kristi told me that she wanted me to talk when I got here. So, but, so yes, we do lessons in the classroom, K through four, all the school counselors at the three different elementary schools. Specifically in my school, I've really been trying to add in lessons where I see that it's needed. Something specific I added in second grade was an "It's Okay to Be Different" lesson because that's really the age that we're finding kids are starting to notice the differences between each other and start to talk about them. And then we also, last year, or over the past year or so, we've been adding in career lessons through the Chapter 339 Plan that I had spoken to part of this board about last year. So we did, we're doing a kindergarten, second, and fourth grade career lesson. And the other thing that we added in this year that we're doing through the SAC program is we're working with the Karen Foundation and we're bringing PaaS back to our school, which is a group of lessons that they do that are geared toward a specific topic. And you can do it in all the different grades, but we chose second and fourth. And the second grade lessons are really focusing in on feelings and what to do with our feelings, which is what I start to talk about in first grade. So it's actually working nicely that then they're getting that reminder in second grade and they get to learn a little bit more. And then they still get lessons from me in second grade that start to focus on teamwork and cooperating and giving compliments. So moving along, which then leads into third grade, which is when we do our anti-bullying lessons. And then now in fourth grade, we've added some PaaS lessons as well. We've already done two of them. So Jeanne came in and did a lesson on problem solving. And then today, she actually came in and did a reminder for the anti-bullying lesson, which was great because, again, I talked about it in third grade and now they're relearning it again in fourth grade as a reminder. And then they're going to continue to get lessons from me. The lesson that I'm going to be doing coming up for fourth grade is goal setting, which is going to relate to the stuff that Kristi was teaching everyone about at the beginning of the year with the lesson that she did for fourth grade. So I'm going to be tying that hand, you know, basically.
So our...
Sorry, excuse me. Are you using the SAP program? Are you using that proactively? So you're taking advantage of having that resource? Or are you using it in response to somebody having an issue where they need support?
We're actually, yeah, both. Yeah. So we have been very fortunate to have professions in our building and we are very active in giving students who need that assistance and providing that help to our families. But sometimes we have new students that come to us and we don't necessarily know them and we start to see behaviors and then we do have to react to that. But we really strongly believe that if our students are feeling good about themselves emotionally, socially, behaviorally, that they're going to be more productive in school and they're going to feel that success one way or another. And our teachers have been amazing at working with, working with our team to try to build strategies with our students. And we sit together right as a team. We talk about behaviors. And sometimes it's just a matter of sitting with the computer and in case you see a lot of Amazon orders from Lorraine, it's related to this. So, you know, that student might need a, we might need a timer. We might need a clipboard. We might need a special chair. And those are, that's what that child needs to be successful and we feel so that we have been successfully in providing that to our students.
Can I ask a question? You mentioned the We Are Different program. You're talking about that in second grade. Can you explain that a little bit?
So that's specifically one lesson, but there's a book by Todd Par. It's called It's Okay to Be Different. And we go in and I do like a really simple activity. Do you like chocolate or vanilla? And then you have to go to like the center that you like. And then we talk about what did you notice about your classmates? Well, we're all different. We like different things. Some of us like the same things. How does it make you feel? What would it be like if we were all the same? And then we really think about that. What are, what's good about our differences? And then what I've been doing over the past few years, which has been really awesome, is every child gets to create a page and we make a class book. And in the, because basically in the Todd Par book, it says it's okay to, you know, have blonde hair. It's okay to wear glasses. Amazing, you know, as an example. So it's just showing that it doesn't matter what we have. It's okay to have that and to be that way or to like this thing. So the kids get to do that then and the things they come up with is so cool. We, you know, if we have a student with diabetes, it's okay to have diabetes, things like that. Or it's okay to have different colored skin. We see that and the kids are noticing that. And then they create this class book and I laminate it and they get to keep it in their room and kind of see all the differences that are within their classroom.
Have you noticed any, because it's a hot topic, transgender or gender ambiguity or questioning going on that early?
So actually, this is sort of the reason that we brought that lesson in. There was a child that we were thinking that there could be concerns that would come up. It was nothing that had been stated, but there was some differences that he was showing that we weren't sure how that were that from.
This is he showed.
Yeah. And that student actually is no longer in our district. But besides that, we were like, you know what? This is really important. So actually, like two years ago, I reached out to possibly Alicia Leonard, I think, at the high school. I think that's who I had talked to. And I had asked her if she had any resources for starting to address that at a young age. And kind of the response that I got is, you know, it's probably good to start talking about differences. So I was like, let's start with this lesson. And, you know, in third grade, go into the anti-bullying lessons, which does talk a lot about that. In second grade, we also talk about problem solving. All the things kind of relate to each other in different ways. There's a little teamwork lesson we do too.
As counselors, do you send a newsletter home for families to see what the guidance curriculum is, what you're doing in the classroom so they can also... Like I remember when my children went to school, there was like, here's what we're doing. And then everybody can also follow through at home. Like, is that still going home? So parents are informed, you know, because it is a sensitive topic, it's specifically such a young age, that parents are being informed that that is going on, you know, is being discussed.
At certain of the levels, I do send something home. It's something that I'm slowly incorporating in because I'm still fairly new. This is my third year that I'm like official, that I've finalized. So I've been slowly trying to add things in because I started kind of from scratch in my school. There weren't any classroom lessons or small groups happening when I got there. So I totally agree with you. That is something I really would like to do more. So I've been trying to talk to parents as much as possible. I did speak this year at the Welcome back night and I talked to the whole school, all the parents who came that night and shared everything that I'm doing, all those different things, obviously in a much shorter...
I just think that, yeah, just continue to be mindful that as a parent, you know, I've heard that being discussed and, you know, it's a hot topic in the news. So as long as the transparency is there and parents are, parents are being aware that that way they can choose saying, you know what? I don't want my child there for that lesson or whatever. Might be, you know. And I don't think you'd find that a lot, but I think it's important that you're up on top of that. So it sounds great.
Yeah. One of the things that we had added this year was Facebook. We find that even though we use Parent Link often to send emails to families, that's not really the way people get their information. They really get it through social media. And so it was a learning curve for me because I don't have Facebook. And so the secretary that I work with has been very gracious to teach me and starting in January, I'm going to start to tweet. I don't understand. I don't know how that's going to go. But, you know...
You have four D characters now.
Yeah. So I, you know, I'm trying to learn too. But we had talked about making sure that we keep parents current using Facebook because then the word will spread. And so when we have something with the Halloween parade, which so many parents want to attend, but they can't, they're working, we took as many photographs as we could. We created a presentation. We put it on Facebook. So even our families who couldn't be there, at least they had access to see, you know, what was happening. So we have been trying to focus more on to trying to build our communication with parents through Facebook so they feel like they have a connection with the school.
Another small thing I did, I just want to mention, I thought of it, is in the yearbook last year, I asked the APC if I could have my own page. And I am very aware of the fact that kids that are in my small group are the best confidential thing. So those kids were not included in any pictures. But I took pictures of the classrooms with different lessons that I did and they all had captions of like the different things so that the kids or the parents got to see like, who is this Miss Seaburger? Because the kids go home and they talk about, you know, like, I've never let you before.
So typically, they say she's the principal. But I'm usually the lunch lady.
Or then I'm like the like assistant principal or something like that. We think that, yeah. Or then I'm the lunch lady or assistant, you know, here.
So do you do your presentations, can you go into the fourth grade?
Yep.
Okay. And I'm glad that you guys are doing developmental counseling because I think that's very important that, you know, to get on, you know, get into the job before problems start and then you're in the classroom counseling. I think, thank you so much for that doing. Are you only admin?
Yes, I am admin. Yep.
Only, yeah. Good, good. Is that how all the, one counselor can be spilling?
Great. Depending on, at grade dinner, there's two, and then junior high, there's two, and then the high school, it's five.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Well, I'm admin and you're admin. Yeah, okay.
Yes, just one. Yep.
So I'm sort of, I think that's, I think that you are able to cover all of those very important topics. Some school counselors and some school districts, you know, they don't have time. But how often do you get into the classrooms?
So right now, I would say that it's, I'm doing about anywhere from six to eight lessons per grade level, depending on the grade level. So when I first started, I did, you know, three kindergarten lessons. And then the next year, we added career. And then the next year, I added two additional lessons. So I've been slowly trying to add lessons throughout the year and space them out so that I still have time to run all the small groups I'm doing. I'm a huge part of the Lorraine student support team that she had mentioned. I also coordinate a lot of other things in the building, like progressions. I help with the OT resource box. I'm coordinating all this stuff through Karen now with the PaaS when they come in. So there's a lot of other things that I'm coordinating too. So I try to space it out so that I can fit in as many as possible because honestly, the kids know who I am and they're more willing to come and talk to me because I'm in there and they see me. I make sure that the kindergartners all knew who I am within that, like that first day of school. I go around, I introduce myself to all the kid tables. I learn all of their names within the first week because I want them to know who I am so that they feel comfortable coming to talk to me if there's anything going on.
And I'd have to say, give credit to Mrs. Howler for recognizing what the real role of school counselor is because...
She's the best principal that anyone could ever ask for. Yes.
Because in some buildings, it had, it had you do a lot of other duties, you know, that...
I said I throw some money her way to say that, but... No, we work, we work very well together. And she's taught me a lot about, you know, working with students at a different level as far as the emotional piece. And it's really important that we address it. You know, sometimes we assume that a behavior is for one thing and it's really because they're crying out for something else. And it's important as educators that we recognize and we address that need. So again, that our students can be successful, that our teachers can be supported, and that they can do their job. And so again, it's, you know, important for Emily to be in front of the kids. I believe it's important for me to be in front of the kids. You know, I don't want children to ever think I'm scared of, I'm scared of Mrs. Howler because I need to be the adult that they come to and need help. So that's why it was really important for me to build upon these lessons and have the children see me in a different light because ultimately, at the end of the day, I started out as a teacher and I will always be a teacher.
Are you, well, I'm sorry. Everyone's going to hate me. Questions, lots of questions. Are you keeping any data to show that the programs are working, like you said, behavior? Are you seeing less behavior? Like, do you have a starting point? And is that something that we could maybe see in another Lorraine report? That they look at the percentage of, you know, who's more rad or whatever?
So we, we track our data using Skyware. That's where we put in our discipline calls. And I have really not had any discipline issues this year except for a couple minor ones where someone spit out their milk or ripped a piece of food, maybe a minor bus incident. There's really been nothing major. We, you know, our students are, I have to say, very, very well behaved. Uh, we expressed to our students in the beginning that we have high expectations for them and that we want to achieve them. And you know, this is only successful when you work with phenomenal families. And so we have, I, I believe that I have an excellent rapport with our parents. Um, you'll probably soon learn in the community that most of the parents, they, they call me Christine. No one calls me Mrs. Howler. Um, and I prefer it that way, uh, because you know, we're, we're in this together and you know, we need to meet.
Okay.
So no pressure. I got to do, I was the first administrator to their board report.
And you did very well.
So, uh, collect these books because you do need them for lessons.
Thank you, Mrs. Howler, and thank you, Ms. Seberger.
Yeah.
Next one, John. Next part of our agenda, um, late sit down comments opportunity for members of the audience and community to communicate concerns, um, their thoughts, comments to the board. Ask that you identify who you are when you make your comments.
Good evening. I'm Robert Quinner, thirty-five oh one Woodland Avenue, Redding, Wrighton. I wanted to be here tonight. I've got some experience in your seat. And I want to congratulate you all on your continued or new service to the community. Uh, I sincerely hope you find that service to be as satisfying as I have over the years. Uh, I'm not gonna preach here or anything like that. And I'm not gonna show up, I'm not like the old firehouse horse that every time the bell rang, he got one running to the, running to the firehouse to go out on the fire again. I'll be very rarely seen around here. But I wanted to pass on some historical information to you, to many of you may not be aware of. Have you ever heard, school taxes will impoverish, if not bankrupt, the people and the state? How about it's wrong for those people without children to pay for the education of other people's children? Or the school tax may force some of us into foreclosure. Now, I've heard all this, but the interesting thing, these were all reactions to the then Governor Wolf's proposal to start public education in eighteen thirty-four. So the arguments haven't changed very much over the years. Uh, if you want to check me out, uh, I would highly recommend the book uh, written in eighteen sixty-six. Called The Education in Pennsylvania, Public and Private. And it was published by Frank uh, Wickerson, the former Pennsylvania Superintendent of Public Instruction. The equivalent of today's uh, Farming Ben. So anyway, Pennsylvania mandated the formation of common school system for free education of all children in eighteen thirty-four. School boards were established at that time. But all finances, purchases, purchasing of land, buildings and equipment was assigned to the municipality in which the school board would be located. Uh, municipalities had a vote. And of the nine hundred eighty-seven districts, four hundred eighty-five of those districts chose to ignore the mandate handed down by the state. Went on until uh, the state finally said enough is enough. You no longer have the option of forming the school district. You will form a system of public education. And uh, shapely, I guess, Exeter was one of the last twenty-three communities to form that system in uh, eighteen forty-nine. So to overcome the lack of uh, support from the municipalities, school boards were incorporated and give the authority to purchase and sell property amongst other things in eighteen fifty-four. In eighteen sixty-seven, they were given the right of eminent domain. So the reason for a school board is you made public education possible and you carry the banner forward. As of this evening, you voting members of the board have the sole authority and responsibility for conduct of public education in Exeter Township. You are the ones. Superintendent doesn't have a vote. The solicitor doesn't have a vote. It's you nine people. You alone are responsible for satisfying state requirements, hiring and firing of personnel, acquisition of materials and real estate, and most importantly, providing the students of Exeter with an education in preparation for their future. On top of that all, all that, you're also responsible to ensure that you accomplish, what you accomplish reflects the expectations of the Exeter residents. I can assure you, it's an al- it's a most insurmountable, almost insurmountable task, but you will balance it out. I would ask that you think a moment about the other school districts you may be familiar with. Each has its own personality or reputation. It is you, the school board, along with the students, administrators, teachers and staff that create that reputation. Fortunately, you have teachers, administrators and staff to assist you, but the responsibility still remains in your hands. I've had the opportunity to teach at uh, two school districts in the county and at rec. And I consider myself to be fortunate to have interacted with personnel from all the districts. And I assure you that our, and to include the people at the IU, I assure you that our teachers, principals and staff represent some of the best in the county. So, in the future, their future is in your hands. You are their employer now. So if assertions come out questioning the qualifications of any of that staff, I would recommend you demand proof of that. Those assertions take nothing for granted. If there somehow is some deficit or lacking uh, lacking in an individual, they are not, they do not lack credentials nor dedication or vision. Now, this is the most, probably most important thing I'm gonna say, I'm gonna say tonight. There is a movement that says, y'all just stand back like corporate board or something and let the real experts take care of it. The real experts are ones who are working with kids. It's a very attractive concept to do that. It'll make the job one heck of a lot easier. But each of you has had experience in management, leadership or an industry that gives you the tools to fulfill your obligation to run. You merely need to demand the justification, you, you must demand the justification and detailed planning for each decision or policy or program that you're presented with to take action on. To do any less than to get that detailed planning is to abrogate your responsibilities to the voters, to the students and to the district itself. So I look forward to reading about your decisions in the future. I've never been one known to disappear softly in the night. For now, I will bid you a good congratulations to you all and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your years of service uh, to the school district. Any additional comments from the public today? If not, we're gonna move on in our agenda. Next uh, section of the agenda of the minutes. It will be approving on the nineteenth, we'll be approving board workshop minutes from November fourteenth. We'll also be approving the board voting meetings from, uh, minutes from the meeting of November twenty-first. In regard to board policies, uh, we forge on, continue to move ahead with our, with assistance from PSBA on the provision of our policy manual. Um, we're in a different section, we're moving into a different section now, the two hundred section, which uh, has to do with students and pupils. The uh, the items that we're dealing with, uh, on the, on the nineteenth will include uh, policies that are new. And they include uh, standards for persistently dangerous schools and standards for victims of violent crimes. Uh, those are two policies that uh, are brand new. And then we'll be revision, making some minor revisions to some very um, older and well more policies that have to do with enrollment, admission of students and eligibility of non-resident students. Um, I just have one item that I'd like to talk about briefly, uh, which is policy two oh one. Two oh one incorporates provisions for admissions of students to uh, to school. Characterizes kids coming to first grade as beginners and then sets admission standards for students at kindergarten. But it also has a section that replies to early admission to kindergarten. And I'd ask our people services director, Sue Miller, to uh, maybe uh, give me an explanation in regard to whether or not we intend to make any changes to that policy relative to early potential or related to first grade. I know we had made that suggestion to investigate at the last um, meeting, the last time we talked about this policy. I just wondered whether there's been any, any review or investigation into whether or not that, that would be a consideration for modification of this policy.
Our school psychologists are looking into uh, what we are, what we're trying to.
Could you step up at the mic? I really can't hear you. I made you turn it on. I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's fine. Hello? Okay. There we go.
Thank you.
Our school psychologist, uh, we are reviewing what we've been doing in the past. And we want to see about moving forward with um, having early admission. I think we feel as a district, we want to talk to principals as well too. Early admissions can have its place and should have its place in the district. Uh, but we have to have some criteria for that for the, the, the policy. We are reviewing current policy right now.
All right, let me just give you this. Here's a student who attends a private kindergarten program. And they attend that program as a four-year-old going into September. And that means they would be less than six years old going into kindergarten. Uh, they'd be five going into, I'm sorry, going into first grade the following year. Uh, what are the provisions for that?
One of the things we're looking at is putting the, uh, you'd be five coming into our kindergarten, but you'd need to be six coming into our first grade. But there's dates online because we were looking at the policy you and I discussed. And there was a bit of a misalignment there. You had to be five by survey coming into kindergarten, but didn't seem to apply to first grade. And we wanted to kind of fix that, um, you know, confusion. So someone that wanted early admission and they were coming from a kindergarten, they would need to meet the early admission requirements.
So they would have to do the early admission.
They would have, they would need to meet an early admission requirement if they didn't meet our um, entrance to first grade ages by cutoff date.
So they would have to be six by September first?
Yes.
Okay, again, what if they attended the private kindergartens that said that they didn't?
They had a different admission date.
They would have a different admission date.
Then they would have to meet our early admission criteria.
And when would they be tested for that?
When a parent will, there are some regulations that we have now. Uh, there's a certain amount of timeframe. A parent has to put in a rating and request, and then a school psychologist would do that prior to school starting.
Okay. Do you see any reason why that should be included in this policy or not included in this policy?
I think early admissions should stay in. There's definitely um, some students that it would uh, be appropriate for. Uh, I, I, I don't believe in black and white. There's always gray. So, and it's not my opinion. So it's, our teams are looking at it and then we'll bring it to the board for the board to review.
Okay, well, so we have um, at this point right now, we're reverting on a second reading on the nineteenth. Do you see, like, if we make any substantial changes to that policy, we would have to revert to first grade?
Right. I thought we talked about possibly tabling this policy until we had opportunity to really look at it.
So is that your suggestion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so um, I'd like to make note of that, that we would uh, remove this item from the agenda for the nineteenth, so we still have time for.
Yes, we have more time to really thoroughly look at that and then the board can really review our, our input and how they want to move forward on that.
I think it'd be great, yeah. Okay, thank you. So those are the, uh, those are the other items on, on, Mr. Brady.
I have a question, number two oh two. I'm looking, I see two questions. First is on the item of former residents. I'm trying to identify the changes. I've seen that that area was struck out. I'm trying to identify what the differences between what we had and what we will have. And I'm, unless I'm missing a word somewhere, I've read it word for word. It seems to be a mirror, but I may be missing punctuation or something. So I just, you can probably find the change.
If you're looking at the electronic version, anything that you see in bold represents an addition or enhancement.
It's just a red cross out.
Oh, I see. So you're thinking under former residents?
Correct.
Okay. So that was information that was included in a previous policy that's been eliminated? And I think that may even be uh, an edit that was made locally here and not by PSBN.
But what's above it is staying in, correct?
Yes, yeah.
That's exactly word for word was below.
That's probably why it's removed. That's why you moved.
Okay, the second.
That is, that is exactly why it's removed.
The second, second item I have is, and it's not mentioned here, it may be covered somewhere else. At least two years ago, we had an issue where there was an individual who owned a business in Exeter Township who wanted to have their children attend Exeter Township School District and wanted to know if we would do that tuition-free because they were already paying taxes. I think we reached an agreement with them. They were able to do that because of our taxpayer. But I don't know if that is covered in this policy or just an understanding agreement.
Right below the red cross out is where they address that. That's non-resident owners of business properties.
Okay.
And there's a provision for, got fifty percent reduction in tuition uh, associated with any owner owns a property or has a business and then they're not subject to the TIF or the Lord Act tax. So that'll, that'll continue in policy.
I had a couple of questions associated with each of the policies, so I'll try and be as quick as possible and try and keep with the same thought. But for uh, number two oh two, um, under the uh, let me try and find it. Um, I believe it's for somewhere under here for, I think it's uh, former residents or people who reside outside of the district. They have the option to make tuition on a monthly basis, um, but it's only on a monthly basis. Whereas in the business owners, they only have the option of paying on a per semester basis. And I was wondering if there's any reason behind that disparity? And in addition, I'm wondering if there would be any way that we could change that to give them both the option of either a semester or a month.
The reason we did that was we felt that the individual who had the business was going to be someone who was going to have a vested interest in the community. And they were going to have to make a commitment upfront that your child was gonna have to stay here for a half a year at that point. Would it be a situation where you're living outside the community and you realize it wasn't gonna be a fit? It's like, you made a decision.
The, the non-resident issue as well is if you're leaving and you're gonna be here for maybe another month, gives you the opportunity to have your students still attend until you're maybe setting up your, your situation outside the district.
Okay, but don't.
Rather than force them to pay for a semester.
Oh, because that possibly applies to, to uh, people who are completing their junior year, that, okay. I, I appreciate that, Mr. Brady. Um, and I'm not looking to stir the pot. Uh, but in my mind, I, I just think that it would be an option of choice. And I think for giving them the ability to either choose by a monthly basis or a semester basis, it makes no difference to the service that we provide, I would think.
I think it adds to the accounting. It's just another task we have to put on our accounting staff that we have to be monitoring versus being able to keep up front with it and know where we're going with it.
I, I think that's, that's sort of fair. Um, I would say that this probably applies to very little people. And on the same token, as you might say, well, why is it a big deal? I would ask the same thing.
I don't think it, I don't say it's not a big deal. I just think that it's a matter of if the individual is making a commitment for their children to attend a school district, it should be, that commitment should be well thought out and they should be buying into the decision, not something where they're just testing. not something where they're just testing the waters to see if they want to, see if they like it or not. It's just what we're doing. Because at some point, obviously, they made a decision, they wanted to have their children here.
I, I don't want to take anybody else's opportunity to speak before me, but I have a couple of other questions associated with some of the policies. Under number 143, standards for persistently dangerous schools. Do any of our schools currently meet these standards? No? Okay. And I'm also curious to find out what the involvement of keeping track of drug-related incidents within this policy, because it's kind of vague. And I'm guessing that it's probably a state requirement that they're both reported, but for the report that has to do with violence or weapons possession, which I think is how they're defining dangerous schools, there doesn't seem to be any reference in that definition to drug-related incidents. So I, I don't know if there's any way that, maybe just some clarification on why that's the case.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I know we have to report, you know, major disciplinary violations to the state, and there's a report that goes in. I'm not too sure whether it's under the violence and weapons possession report though. So I can't speak to that. Maybe, maybe our secondary folks can. Jason, I don't know.
Can we fill out a report? We do fill out a state school report at the end of every school year in conjunction with the tech department that manages the Skyward software, and we have to go through that audit process. But a drug offense, a weapons offense, all gets reported to the state. There's a series of offenses that fall under that category as, you know, state reportable offenses versus non-state reportable offenses, which might be like cutting of a class, you know, minor classroom disruption. But whether it's drugs, alcohol, weapons, those all get reported to the state. Tobacco, fights, you know, bullying, harassment, those are all categories that get reported as part of the state reporting at the end of the year.
What's, what's the report? Like Hunter was asking, we're looking at the standards of persistently dangerous schools as weapons and so on. What's, what's it called to PDE for reporting of the drugs and alcohol?
The safe schools report.
Safe schools, okay. Thank you.
Now, is that at the end of the calendar year or is that at the end of the school year?
At the end of the school year. Really, we are in a pretty tight crunch come June. We get students out of the building, and we have to dive right into that because the window that they give us is relatively short. But we have to submit the information. They give us basically a summary back, and we have to audit that summary and make sure that there isn't, you know, no discrepancy. That's also done in conjunction with the Exeter Police Department. In June, I'm usually talking with Chief Knightour to verify and make sure that, you know, incidences where maybe we had included police involvement to determine whether or not, you know, someone has been categorized as arrested or cited or adjudicated or none of the above. And sometimes we don't get that information until much later in the process, and so there's always that communication that we have to do with the Exeter Police to make sure that our numbers line up with their numbers. So it's a good check and a balance.
Is that data reported to the board at the end of the year?
I believe it is. Dr. Phillips, you might know that.
I think it's shared in a report, I don't think it's reported here.
I meant like a print copy. I don't, okay, okay. So that's, I don't know if anybody else has questions on number 143, but I have a couple more.
I do. Wouldn't possession of drugs or alcohol be considered a non-violent crime and not reported under violent crime statutes?
That's, that's, that's the, that's the emphasis of this particular policy and the report that we're looking at.
You're playing report and policy, you're playing two different, two different areas.
This report is really just to do with, you know, reporting of and protecting of students, you know, from violent and persistently dangerous schools. And the criteria that they look at are primarily more violent types of, so not infractions or violations that would include substance abuse or minor disciplinary fractions. Mr. Dean.
All right. That would also include percentage shift. So you can have a school that is not necessarily persistently dangerous in terms of its, its number, but if the number increases by a percentage, that also has an impact on whether a school is considered persistently dangerous. So you can have a school that has a higher level of dangerous or violent incidences that is actually on a downward trend, which may not get the same rating as a school that has a very low level of violent incidences but is on an upward trend. Those factors come into play. Thank you.
For number 144, standards for victims of violent crimes, there is a window, a period of time where a student is able to transfer out of the district if they've been a direct victim of a violent crime, and that's 30 days. In my mind, when I was reading this, I can imagine situations where that may not be enough time, and I was kind of curious to see if there was any requirement or if there's any reasoning behind that 30-day threshold.
It's, I think it's strictly out of the school code, so I don't think there's much room to kind of make provisions or changes in some of these mandated language.
Okay. On number 146, actually, I'm going to write that for the end of that. For the admission of students at number 201, I was just kind of curious, is there a plan to expand this policy to include other grade levels of admission? Because the title of it is admission of students, and to me, when I'm just reading about this, and I know it's quite small and procedural, but the title to that doesn't really make sense because from everything that I've read, it only deals with kindergarten, pre-K, and first grade.
Yeah, that would be the requirements that this, the policy would deal with. Any other grades, there really isn't, I mean, for the third grader coming in, the third grade.
Yeah.
It's the age which we've been discussing, that really is the linchpin to the policy.
Yeah, and I think the policy 200 talks about enrollment of students in general, so, you know, I think, you know, what you're looking at is two of one has to do more with the enrollment of beginners, whereas, you know, 200 has general enrollment functions. You know, kids can attend school until they're 21-years-old if they haven't been arrested. And a lot of districts sometimes don't appreciate and understand that that's in the title.
Would it be possible to change that title on polling? And I know, I realize that some of you guys might think that that's really small and procedural, but in terms of accessibility and making this accessible to people who are looking at it, I think that title is a little bit misleading. Maybe even if it's admission of first grade or entrance into district or something along those lines, I'm not really sure what the specific language is, I could venture a guess, but I'm just wanting to...
Well, I think the other thing that, you know, we have to be cognizant of is that kids don't have to attend school until they're eight-years-old. So it's oftentimes not just a matter of coming to kindergarten first grade. It's, it is admission of students, you know, from that perspective, and I don't think we want to get too detailed in the title. And these are, these are pretty standard policies that virtually every school district in West Mania has, and we try to keep it that way to maintain some level of consistency, you know, from district to district. The more we vary, the more problematic it becomes when kids move from one district to another. So I, I would be an advocate of trying to maintain common language that we, that PSBA has helped us generate that maintains some consistency throughout, unless there's a real strong reason for that.
Under number 146, I was kind of having trouble conceptualizing this, and I understand that there are state regulations that require that it there. I think six different program reports, and one of them is the student services report. I kind of wanted to get some insight onto how this interacts with our full comprehensive planning and what the differences of this physical document are, and then some information about how that information and that document's used. Because I know oftentimes it's easy to write documents like this, and a lot of them become shelf sitters. And I just kind of wanted to get some insight about how this kind of information is going to be used and to what, to what degree is it going to be integrated in the programs that we have. Speak to that.
Dr. Miller, she's, she's... Dr. Miller, you want to address your section?
First, I think, Hunter, you might have some extensive questions, I might be able to answer them during the, during the, as for interaction. But the comprehensive plan, Dr. Davis, when I worked on that, the comprehensive plan is required to have student services section in there. So areas that we provide student services is incorporated into that plan. As Mrs. Haller had mentioned, we just incorporated elementary student assistance programming throughout all our elementary schools last year with the help of our Karen Foundation representative, and so it is part of our comprehensive plan that is in there.
Okay. So, so it's not a separate report?
It's, well, there's all kinds of reports. The state has all kinds of reports, but it's not, probably 10, if not more, years ago, more veteran people from, from school districts, we used to have all separate reports. It's the special ed report, the education report, and they, the state combined them to that comprehensive report. It's only special ed that we luck out, we have to update it every three years, and the districts have to do it again every six years. But they've combined all those reports, and so that is all incorporated into that one comprehensive plan. Okay.
So there are a couple of things that I identified here, but right now I have a preference for changing, and I'll definitely think about them. Because some of them, you know, to others, they may seem procedural and small, but I think when we're trying to make different things like this accessible and reactive to what the community members are looking for, I think it's definitely appropriate to look in detail at these. So I'll definitely bring those at a later point if I feel it's still necessary.
Just let me, a word of maybe guidance here. When you, when you do look at some of the language, be attentive to the, to the small notations that are numbered because they are hyperlinks to, to things like school code. And a lot of times we don't really have much discretion. So this is, this is language that helps to clarify or emphasize things that exist in law and state standards that we need are required to follow. So if you see that notation, a little less control. If you don't see a notation there, we may have more discretion. And just a kind of a point of discussion as well on terms of these policies, you know, we've had significant discussion here, and that's great. I will say that, that all of these policies go through a pretty extensive review process by PSBA legal counsel as well as our own solicitor, Sweet Stevens, that looks at all of these policies and, and helps, you know, guide us and make recommendations regarding any, any changes we should consider. And I know we have a lot of policies that we have to cover. We've got over, well, over 300 policies, and we're a fraction of the way there. We're in the 200 section, and I think we go up to the 900 section. So we have a long, long way to go. So in many respects, we're trying to honor and try to appreciate the work that's going into it, and not get too detailed in terms of some of the suggestions that we make. But it doesn't mean we can't. It just means that in the interest of time, sometimes we really try to, to maybe keep the discussion a little bit limited. And, and I would suggest to anybody, if you, as you read through these in advance, please email your, your comments to Donna Napoli, and, and she'll make sure that those are communicated to the rest of the board for consideration at the next meeting. So as we go forward with these, that's the kind of way we use it with it, and our, and our policy committee will continue to do everything we can to make this a smooth process to get through the entire, entire manual. It could take a few years. Thank you. Any other, any other comments about the policy section? Okay. Thanks, everybody. I'm going to move to business functions. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Brady.
First item we'll be looking at is we're going to recommend that the Board of School Directors accepts the fiscal year of 2016 to 2017 law report as prepared by Malle LLP and authorize this distribution of the report. The second item we'll be looking at will be resolving that the Board of School Directors of the Exeter Township School District authorizes or mentioned the assessment appeal filed to number 17-19508 in the first category of column pleas by BRE, RSC, Exeter, PALP, And we'll also be resolving that the Board directs its solicitors, Sweet Stevens, Katz and Williams, and its administration officers to take all actions necessary to protect the district's interests in the appeal. And then the next thing we have is we recommend that the Board of School Directors accrue a bunch of transfers in the month of 2017, and they may have $286,145.
Thank you, Mr. Brady. Are there any, any questions or discussion?
If I may, I would... In the assessment appeal, do I understand it correctly that the valuation of the property was more than doubled, and then it was kicked back a little bit in the original appeal? Is that what happened?
Let Mrs. Gage respond to that.
The district, actually, the property sold in May, June of 2016 at a value, market value, that indicated that the assessed value should really be looked at. And the district did a reverse appeal, and they went to the Board of Assessment and for, you know, presented the information. The Board of Assessment increased, recognized that market value, and increased the assessed value. Following year, the owner, which is BRE, filed an appeal, and that's August, the 2, just this past August. And we sat at a hearing, and they presented an appraisal which indicated a market value less than the 75 million. And the Board of Assessment and the county took action to reduce it, a modest amount, which we expected. And they, the owner now, has filed an appeal to the court to actually, you know, go in front of Judge Alash to try and get it reduced even further. Now, the district, because we have a huge interest in this, we would want to intervene so that we maintain our interest or protect our interest as best we can. If we didn't intervene, then all the judge would have is a one-sided view being the owner's appraisal. So in cases like this, one of our largest commercial taxpayers, we intervene, and the reason it was put on the agenda, we just got notice last week about this, and the first pre-trial conference is scheduled for January. So we really want to get on board and be at that pre-trial conference to hear what's going on. And how it typically plays out is we would have to get an appraisal done on the property in order to compare to theirs, and eventually, you know, there's meetings with Judge Alash, and obviously our attorney goes along and our appraiser, and we try to come up, you know, with some type of compromise on what's a fair market value.
In speaking with people at the, at the township supervisors, they've told me that one of the problems that we have here in Exeter is that they get people coming in and looking, businesses coming in and looking, and they talk to the economic development people, and they say, boy, your infrastructure's great, your government structure's good, your school taxes are going to kill us, and we're not going to come here. So we have this company who had their taxes more than doubled, they kicked back a little bit, they want a little bit more. I don't see anything wrong with meeting them somewhere. Okay? And this is going to cost us a bunch of money, so why don't we just let it move forward? Give the business community a little something, and give other people a reason to come to us and increase our tax base.
I think you're moving against the, the school district and everything you just said there, jury. I think if there's an individual who owns a business or property in this, in this school district, just as any owner does, I think that they are responsible for the assessment of the property, and they have to pay the appropriate taxes for that value.
Just to put it in terms of dollars, I mean, the, the reduction that the Board of Assessment granted, effective for July 1, 2018, the district's revenue would go down 150,000... granted, and effective for July 1, 2018, the district's revenue would go down 150,000. And if they, if it remained one-sided and the district didn't intervene, the reduction in real estate taxes to this district would, if the judge would say, "Okay, let's go with our appraisal," would be 378,000. And if you look at that over a five-year period, you know, that's 1.9 million dollars, whereas what was just reduced, that's 700,000. So there's a lot at risk there, the judge saying, "Okay, give them what they want." We're just, you know, the, the, the school board really just needs to be present and try and do, do it fair. I mean, get an appraisal done on the property. I mean, it's sold for 75 million dollars. So, you know, risking, you know, losing that much more commercial revenue is probably not something that we want to do. Eventually, there's gonna be a compromise. They will most likely get more reduced, but, you know, you wanna control how much that's gonna be, and how to be fair.
My house sold for 162,000 when we bought it, but I believe the assessed value is 103. So should the county reassess me at 162 and make me pay more taxes?
Well, I don't think that's what Ann was saying. I think, and, and, and part of this, I definitely agree with you, is that we don't wanna be forcing businesses to pay more just because we want more revenue. But if it comes out that they're over-assessed as it is, I don't, I personally don't believe that there's a problem with saying, "All right, well, we came back from our appraiser, and we got this number, and I have no problem getting as close to that as possible, as long as it's not underneath it." Because I think what Ann said was that we're looking for a fair outcome here. Not necessarily that we wanna make sure that this is only gonna go down a tiny bit to the point where it's fair, but getting an actual fair number. So that, that's, that's what I'm looking for through this process. But I, I definitely agree with you. Let's not intervene for the sake of intervening to make sure that we're just retaining revenue for the sake of retaining revenue. Let's make sure that we're doing it in a responsible way that's not only fair to us, but also fair to the, ask, the, what's the word, the reputation of our community, saying, "We're not anti-business, and we're pro-growth, and we wanna see growth come here," because that's really what's in the interest of the district, because our expenditures are outpacing our revenues, and if we really wanna get anywhere, we really need to increase our revenues, and I prefer to make sure that doesn't happen with raising taxes.
Any other discussion? Mrs. Gray?
I personally think that the business community benefits for, by having an educated school district that will provide an education for the students here. Let's face it, you heard about the, the things that the councils are doing, developmental counseling and everything else. I, if we, if, if, why would businesses have to pay taxes and fair taxes? No one's asking for an unfair tax from them. The, the assessment was what it was. I mean, why should we say, "Okay, well, we won't even try to go with the judge and, before, and plead our case." Yes, it's gonna cost us money, but it's gonna cost us a lot more money if we just lay back down and quit, and say, "Well, I'm sorry, that's the way it goes." And the business, the business community needs to understand that, you know, that means kids won't be breaking into their businesses. We have to pay for, you know, police protection and everything else. The police won't have to be going there. And so this business of, you know, the business community shouldn't pay taxes, they, they need to pay taxes, and they need to pay their fair share of taxes. I, I'm sorry, but I, I can't, I can't even say to the district, "Oh, well, we shouldn't go there and, and try to get our fair share of the taxation."
But I didn't say they shouldn't pay taxes. What I said is they shouldn't be raped, which is, which is what, that's the way I look at this.
I don't think they're being raped at all. I think we're looking at they're having a reduction in their taxes already, and now they're looking for more, and we're looking at a 1.2 million swing on this. I mean, it's a difference of 700,000 versus 1.9 billion. I mean, that's, that's a lot of taxes. Take that on your average homeowner who's paying, what, four to 6,000 dollars in the, in the township? You take that out to 1.2 million dollars, that's a lot of homes.
Yeah, I'd just like to say that, you know, from my perspective, this is a process that is negotiated and worked through by our representative attorney and the attorneys for the properties. This happens frequently, and, and they, and we do end up negotiating, we do end up with a compromise. There, there is a, generally, a leading part weapon, you know, that's how things are resolved in issues like this. So I don't think this is anything unusual. We've been through this before. It's just somewhat atypical that, that this has been brought up so quickly after what we thought was a resolved issue, is that, right?
Right, because the opposing, the attorney for BRE did not send us, the district, the preliminary decree. That would've given us ample time in November to talk with the board and address it, but we didn't get it. He admitted, "I'm sorry." So that's when we got the notice from Judge Lash last week that, you know, pretrial status conference is January, so that's why this appeared so quickly.
Is that their responsibility to send that notice?
It is.
Okay.
One of the things I would say, Dr. Hamburg, is that the larger issue here is that the township itself is looking to envision a future that would broaden the tax base in Exeter, which would, in a committee, the potential homeowners in Exeter. And I think this is an opportunity for us to look for chances to partner with the township and understand that vision, and figure out how we grow together, because as the township grows, and if we pursue the, the plan that the township is envisioning, and it broadens that base, and we, then we all benefit. We benefit by a better community and potentially lesser homeowner taxes.
And, and I would agree, but I, but I think also we do have some things in place. I mean, we just referenced in policy the, the LERTA, which I think is, is an incentive for businesses to, to come in and take advantage of, of reduced taxes for a period of time. I, I think that was a proactive part on the part of the school district to do that. So, you know, we've historically tried to do our part, you know, with that, but it's well taken. Any other comments? Okay, then we're gonna move on to personnel, committee, and Mr. Brady again.
First thing we'll be doing was wait looking at some retirements. Actually, one of the one that's upcoming, the last one we're asked to have, all types of appointments, some new staff, including our junior principal, Launke, believes in absences for some of our staff, add our support staff, last change of status for one employee. And then we also have recourse requests under 80 years of attachment there, or eliminate that, and we have two staff conferences.
Any discussion or questions about any items on the agenda for personnel?
As much as he is coming in new. And him coming in at this level has gotta create some resentment within the elementary principals, and even from what I printed out, he's making more than the principal at Reifden. He's coming in fresh.
He is not.
He is not?
He is not. He is coming in, he is one, there's one principal that'll be making more money than.
Then I guess I, I have old figures.
I, I can share the figures with you.
Okay. So to piggyback on that and talk about the assistant superintendent, last month the board asked for a salary range. Do we have that yet?
That was approved.
130, 135.
Was it? At least, I believe, we didn't approve it.
Did we discuss that?
Sure, we never, there was no approval.
Okay, well, okay, well, that would be the range that we were recommending.
Do we understand that the four candidates who are moving on are within that, you know, acceptable range for them?
At this point, three are, one's a little bit above, but I, they know the range. Any other discussion, questions for personnel? Okay, we're gonna move on to student functions. Sure, he is representing student functions, but I, if in the absence of any former or current society at that committee, I will just say that we will be having a report on field trips within the 60-mile radius, and that's the extent of student functions. So that represents the entirety of our agenda for the 19th to date. There may be some additions, so I would caution the board members to, to, to look at your emails to make sure anything that, that maybe there are any additions or changes, just typically get something via email from Donna Napoli. Any, excuse me, wait, okay. Any additional questions, comments before we close the meeting today?
Yeah. The, the lawsuits concerning the bus barn, it's my understanding that that was changed to the 18th from yesterday. Is that something like that?
It's my understanding, yeah.
Okay.
That was at the request of the township attorneys.
Okay. I'd like to get a discussion going about getting rid of those lawsuits, because they've cost the taxpayers the low-end 25,000 dollars, what I've heard, and I've heard as high as 27, 28. I don't think they're gonna accomplish anything, and I'd like to see them dropped.
I agree.
I don't think the suit should be dropped at this point, because I think we've got a long way to get where we're at. I think that this suit looks at what precedent will be going forward with the consideration of how the school district can use the properties in any function. I think that at this point, we have to see where we'll fall out. I don't think it would be advisable to move out of our position at this point. I think we're very strong. I think at the same time that we have to review all the needs of our operation, and I think after you have a chance to review previous documentation of how we work with our bus operation, you'll understand why we're trying to get to the facility we're trying to build.
I, I would say, I'm not so sure whether our, our new member, board members have had the opportunity to, to really get into the weeds on this, and part of what we do, frankly, in executive session, is to have discussions about legal matters where we can get into much more detail with our, with our attorney in terms of, you know, how we're positioning ourselves in this, in this case, and the rationale, you know, behind it. I mean, I think we can speak generally, but I think we, we have to be somewhat careful in, we've got our attorney here. Mr. Katz will also advise us, I think, that if we, that there's, there is some, you know, important reasons for, I think, both us, for us, us to know what we're, we're getting into, and also be careful about how much is discussed in a, in a public forum, because this is an ongoing lawsuit.
I just would like to say, I keep hearing a lot of, "That's what we've traditionally done," or "past practice," or "historically," and, and I think that that is absolutely, I mean, looking at history even today, if you look at history of what's gone on in America and the US, you know, the world, whatever, you learn from those things, and then you make changes. There's been a lot of mistakes, I think, that have been made, and I think we can't say anymore that that's historically what we've done. Well, that's history. We need to start making decisions based on now and the present. And quite honestly, I was very offended by the article in the Reading Eagle that just ran, and, you know, I'm glad Jerry brought it up, you know, we might not be able to discuss it in depth, but I think it has to be a top priority. And I think we, we need to listen to our community members and our township and start working together. Whatever was precedent or historical in the past, again, that's the past.
I asked Ann, and she's going to provide to all of the new members, a study we had in 2011, I know it may be about six years old, but it was the first one we had done in 15 years, and it reviews our whole bus operation, transportation, and how it works through the system. It actually gave very good marks to Mr. Reifden in his operation. It looked at how he's using his resources to the top capabilities he has, but also when we looked at our new, our facility that we have currently, and what we're trying to maintain, it is undersized. That facility came into being, I don't know, 40, 50 years ago, while we had probably a number of vehicles, we had, was probably a third of what we have right now. We run 50 buses plus vans every day. We have one bay to work on them. We have limited area there to house our vehicles. We're just looking at how do you make this operation the most feasible? We also considered other areas in the township, and it gets on, that document will not get into that, but I think if you have a chance to review that document, at least give you some background information on why we determined at that point we're gonna move forward with having, still having our own buses at our operation, because we found that was much more economical. Also, we put our bus program out to bid. We only had one bidder that came in at a competitive range, and we found out that the 500,000 dollars that they were gonna save was because they were buying our buses for 500,000 dollars. So anyway you look at it, if we do have a busing operations not in-house, they will require us to have some kind of facility that they can maintain vehicles. So I think that it would be great if you guys could review that document, maybe just gain a little knowledge in that area.
I agree with you, and I have tried to do some of my own research, as well as talk to some former board members and current board members about that topic. And I, I think that if Exeter is going to maintain our, our own busing, I'm not saying we shouldn't, and I'm not saying we don't need another, we definitely need an upgraded facility of some sort. But I think it's time to work together with our community members and our township, and instead of being contentious and creating a lot more. But that, again, that's, you know, the whole, I have a lot of thoughts on it, but I see three buses go through my neighborhood, you know, every day, and there's two kids on those buses. I think there's a lot of evaluations and reevaluations we need to do with our own system, and yes, a bus garage is necessary, but I think we, we need to stop fighting it and work together.
I think sometimes the, I'm not sure where your neighborhood is, but maybe if that's children are going to some of the peripheral schools, private schools, they would be on those buses.
I agree, and we do see, I do see vans picking up students in uniforms, Exeter vans, but I've heard it from not just my neighborhood, but lots of neighborhoods, like, there's three kids on the bus, or there's one kid on the bus. I mean, I think we, I think there's a lot of, of reevaluating the busing program in general, and it's just such a small piece. The community members are, are seeing this as such a negative connotation of this board, and I, I think it needs to be resolved as soon as possible, and we need to start working together. And I, like, even just the idea with the, the businesses and the, the taxes, we need to grow. I'm concerned with the drop in attendance, I'm concerned with these empty buildings that are just sitting around our district, there's nothing to, people complain, "There's nothing to do around here," you know. I don't know, there's a, there's a bigger, a bigger discussion. As a small piece, I think that there's a lot to be evaluated, reevaluated, and a lot bigger, it's a lot bigger topic than just the bus facility.
Well, I think regarding drop of population, I don't think you'd find that would be an extra school district alone problem or situation. I think you'd find that in, generally, in most school districts, because we had a big, if you look at college populations in 2009, that was the peak for colleges ever, and minutes, and everything's dropped off since then, and I think it's historically going the same through our schools. At the same time, always saying, I look around my neighborhood, I see a lot of people pushing shoulders, so it's probably gonna go the other way, just a matter of time. But maybe somehow, keep, keep color. What?
I think we need to look at the demographics, yeah, and, and look at the research. I think that, to me, that... I think that, to me, that, that's the one thing I, I will strive to do, is looking at data, looking at the research, let's, let's evaluate and reevaluate these programs, and not just push it to past practice, or push it to historic, and say, what is the trend? What's going on? Let's work with the, the township and find out what, what they're seeing, what we're seeing, and what we can do together to grow this district, to grow this township, to be successful, and to be a place where people wanna come and live again, and go to school, and have our successful students, um, and, and mentally, physically, and obviously educated, so.
I'm interested in knowing, what were some of these other options that were explored in the bus barn being built on Witten Creek? Jimmy mentioned that they looked at other locations, is that, is that information available that we could review?
Well, I, I think one of the, one of the things that I was gonna suggest at the conclusion of this discussion was to, to, for us to get an update from our, from our attorney. We, we really haven't heard from Mr. Kaplan, uh, in a while, I think, this, and, and certainly new board members, I think you're entitled to and need to hear, um, you know, the, the context of this lawsuit, and, and, and where we've, what we've done so far, where, where we are in the process, and what some of the options have been, over this brief interim that we had, where we, the lawsuit was delayed, and what, and some of the attempts we made in order to work with the township. So, I, I think more information would be available, some of it, I think, could be provided publicly, but I think some of the other information we talked about with our attorney would obviously be executive session content. So, I would suggest that executive session prior to the next board meeting, and, and have this conversation, and, and then we'll have a board meeting, and we have an opportunity to deliberate and think, I think, more, in a, in a better informed manner about, uh, what our, what our direction would be, because I.
Are you, so you would get that, we would get that information that before against naming, you're saying?
I, I, what I'm saying is, if we have an executive session, we, we would probably ask, uh, Mr. Kaplan to join us at that executive session, either in person or by phone, and provide us with, uh, you know, the legal, the legal perspective.
That information's already been made public about the location, so there's no reason to have to talk more than is spend more money.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Please abandon on Exeter Township. That information has already been made public, and actually, a part of the discussion took place at this board initial, about where the township and the school district, the options that the township put on paper, because the school district didn't put any additional options on the paper, and I'd be happy to discuss it with any school board member that would like to talk about it.
Thank you. And, and I think the other thing that's going on here is, we actually have two lawsuits. We got denied by the zoning hearing board, and our board got into a snit, and basically said to, uh, the township, well, the heck with you guys, I'm gonna just challenge your ability to even make that decision. And that's the declaratory judgment suit that's out there right now. There's still the zoning hearing board decision out there as well. And I think we make a big mistake when we, when we take the advice from other folks that this is an issue of our authority versus the township's authority. The bottom line is, is that we are a school district in Exeter Township, and we have to find a way to work collaboratively. And I don't think that we truly did the due diligence, I mean, you're not going to find a report on a particular property that's as extensive as was done for a while. Um, we, when we say we do, we did due diligence, you're just not gonna find anything as extensive. We sat in a room here at one point and reviewed a couple of categories amongst board members at a facilities meeting, but there wasn't, uh, there wasn't any, you know, tremendous detail put into that effort. You know, the, uh, bus facility itself is very well run, if you read the report, it's seventy-four pages, um, and not once in that report, the study was done in two thousand and eleven, it was presented to the board in two thousand and twelve, neither the current facility nor its location was mentioned as a determinant to their performance. Um, nobody who's been to that facility realizes that it's a great place to work, but a bus driver's, um, primary place of business is behind the wheel driving our kids to school. And in that instance, in the last couple of months, we have outsourced extracurricular activity buses, we just approved the outsourcing of another bus route at our last board meeting. We have a deep, serious issue here of both recruiting and retaining bus drivers. Now, other folks will tell you that everybody has that problem, but it seems to me that we're almost backsliding in to the outsourcing of bus service, and I'm not necessarily advocating for that. Sixty percent of our bus drivers live in Exeter Township. By all means and all que, um, comments that you hear from the community, they do an amazing job. That facility, the question that I, came into my head in March seventeenth of, uh, two thousand and fifteen, when the board voted eight to one, I was the one no vote on this, was where is the priority for our dollars? Do we take four million dollars and put it into a facility that sits vacant most of the time, or do we take it and put it into the educational environment for our children? And I came down on the side of kids.
Be happy to hear that, just this past week, we got two applications of drivers who have their C D L, so through by January. In the seat.
Any further discussion?
On this, on this matter, I would just add, when I'm thinking about the election and how it turned out, to me, it was a pretty clear indication that a large proportion of the community felt that this bus garage was an issue that they did not like the school district taking up in court. I wouldn't say at all that the bus facility is probably a wonderful place to work, uh, the physical facilities, I mean. Uh, I had the opportunity to take a word with this, uh, tour with Mr. Wegman at one point, and, um, I think there are legitimate, uh, conversations to be had about maybe improvements to that building that we might be able to work with the township on, uh, but the public has been clear, and I know that in the past, um, I think Pat had mentioned that there was a petition at one point for people who were advocating for us to keep the buses, um, but I, I think that this election was very clear, very clear. I mean, people can have a reasonable disagreement about that, but I, I think that this election was pretty clear, and I think that that ended of itself merits, the fact that we should again have a very serious conversation about what direction we wanna go, and that, that's something that you even referenced in your board president questionnaire. And I don't think that, uh, anyway we cut this, this is going to be avoiding, we can avoid this conversation. And I would say that a number of us have been looking over the reports that, uh, Mr. Brady and Mr. Dupin have mentioned, and that this opinion may not be as informed as yours, especially with the availability of legal counsel, but this decision and this advocates the advocacy of the candidates, to look very seriously about privatizing or maintaining the facility at its current location, is something that was an informed decision by each of the members of the board who said that during the campaign.
Unless we're given relief by the township to build the building that we leave there, we are not going to be able to, because we'll have offsets from the back to the front and sides. If we're able to constrain ourselves in our impervious area and building coverage, we may be able to get around the conservation district, but there's no guarantees on that because there's state agency, so we won't enter that. So you have, it would have to be something we came down to. But we also looked at the site and its feasibility to run it operation, and it is a very landlocked location versus what we're looking at in the one. Now, there were other sites that we did look at, we did consider. We looked at old furniture places behind the post office, that site was too small, there's wetlands there, that was an example. We also talked about, can we do something at Giant, and then if we did anything at Giant, if they would sell us the property? We would take our property off the cassettes, that's never a good thing to do. We, I know that someone had mentioned a site behind the home deco, we would have to buy land, we already own land, we wouldn't want to buy more land with the old land. Um, I know that at one point, Mr. Quinter had spoken with someone about an area by a chicken production area, it gets down towards, uh, eighty-two and that area, um, and that was a possible location. But we also looked at the centralization of an operation, and what they call deadheading, the board miles you drive without a child in a bus, less money you make. So we're looking for a centralized location where we can operate the operation to be the most productive. That's really what it's about. I mean, it's not really something where you say we need, we're not looking for a garage or hall, we're looking at a three to four million dollar price tag, that's not a building alone, that's all your land development, but we're looking at how we're building the facility, we're trying to be as economical as possible. We're not gonna be paving all the driveways and parking lots, we're using stone there so we can make infiltration, at the same time not paving, paving. We're only gonna be paving air, we're only, we're only paving areas where we have high movement of vehicles. The existing site in Awada, some of the benefits are that we have a level piece of land that was put as a potential extra field in the future, and also the store where the facilities have the adequacy to be able to build a site there without having to then put in additional sites. So, that was why, some of the reasons we looked at that site as one of the, the better locations. It wasn't saying, you know, you know, let's get up, excited about this site as much as it's, we own the own land, and it's a good, it's a.
To piggyback on, I'm sorry.
What about the information on, uh, the site where the bus is currently located about renovating that? Is there, is there a lawsuit that was in the tank?
We did have an, we had an architect, A E M came in and they looked at that for us, and they evaluated that site versus Awada. If we have to do all the, if we had to do store work, management there, if we were to build out the facility, that would have to go underground in order that we could provide for enough movement of vehicles, or else it would basically take out the whole corner where we park several vehicles every day, and then we have the offset, so it would come down.
Which is what I'm prepared to speak to, it's already been communicated to the school district, and it has, it was communicated long before the city came before the zoning hearing board, the township would waive the issues that the school district was concerned with, um, as including the harm location.
I would, uh, piggyback on Hunter's comments about an election having just been run, uh, a campaign for six months, and in that six months, I spoke to hundreds of people, if not well over a thousand, every single one is against building that garage.
Did they come with you to the thing, they say, I hate that garage, or did they ask you why we needed a garage? And if they came with you, why do we need the garage? Were you able to give them information on where our current operation is, and why we're looking at having a new facility? Because even if we build a new garage, we're over a million, two million dollars to build a new garage, because we have to do, everything has to be union labor, it's a controlled thing through the state, we don't work that way, it's, it's not gonna be inexpensive to do a site, you go on site.
I'm expressing what the voters have said to me, every single one said no to a garage.
I go to Giant, Mike goes to Giant, Mike goes to Giant, people see him, I go to Giant, and I talk to the ice cream, and I leave, so I don't know.
You talk to the ice cream?
Yeah, it talks back to you. We have a very good relationship, Turkey, hello.
Yeah, with apologies to Sigmund Friday, I think school districts have this thing called an edifice complex, we have to build things, okay? I don't think we have to build things, I think we have to look at what can we do, what can we do relative to renovations, um, in that location. Back in two thousand and fifteen, we had two projects slated for the bus barn, we had the underground tanks and roof, they were about a four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar capital expenditure. On the ranking list, they were eighth and fourteenth in terms of projects that needed to be done in two thousand and fifteen, um, or on that two thousand and fifteen list. So my, my challenge always was, how did we go from four hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to a four million dollar best? That was my biggest concern. And again, I think the issue always has to be, is where is that money best spent? Is it on kids, or is it on buses? And, um, the other thing that occurs here is, I know that there's not a desire to outsource the busing service, but if you build a five million dollar facility, you'll never have the opportunity to even consider doing that, because you have a five million dollar facility. And B C I U may need a place to park buses, but they won't need a facility of the magnitude of which we're considering, um, or which was considered as part of this, uh, project.
I just wanna say that I obviously ran for this position, and I agree with what Jerry and Hunter are saying, I've heard those same things. However, I've also heard new board members ask questions that I already knew the answer to, because I feel like I asked, not that I know everything, because I do not, but I guess a lot of questions about this. So my concern is, I heard those taxpayers, and I completely agree with them, however, we're up here in this position, and we're asking questions that we should know more answers to, and if we don't know the answers and we're in this position, then that tells me that the taxpayers also don't have all the information. So I feel like what Dr. Hamburger said, we need to get all the information before we can really have a true opinion on this, and we need to listen to the people that are on the board that know this, and obviously Lisa, that has a lot of insight as well. I feel like we need to listen to the people that know the information, not just listening to the taxpayers that may not have the information, they just have an opinion, um, without having all the facts, because I don't know all the facts, but I know more than some of the people that are new that are asking questions, because I've asked these questions already. So I feel like we have a lot more homework to do as new candidates to learn, both sides.
Michelle, I would say to you that November the seventh was the, uh, the voters screaming for change in the way things are done. Five, we had a turnover of five, uh, school board members, and again, every single person I spoke to said no on the bus barn, no on the bus barn, and you cannot ignore the voters, because then we're gonna have to face them, if two years in my case, or four years in your case, having not listened to them, they're not gonna like that.
Well, if you're gonna bring up the voters, I'm gonna remind you that I got the most votes, and at no point did I ever say that I was for or against this, and they still voted for me. So there are people out there that are, that want the information and wanna make an educated decision like I do.
Uh, Mr. Quinter? I would recommend that you, uh, bring in A E M. They have all the documents on exactly what the, uh, the deficiencies of the current, uh, facility are, exactly what zoning provisions were in violation of, which the township has said they would waive. He also knows what state regulations we were in violation of, which the Department of Transportation would probably not waive. Quite frankly, the twenty-seven, whatever number of names on the petition that we got to keep it inside, in-house, had no impact on me. The dress, bus drivers had no impact on me. What had an impact on me was, we were using dollars to their best advantage, it was cheaper. If this board went out and got new bids on it, I think you would see also that you're not going to get transportation for what you're paying. So far as alternate sites, we went as far down as Bombs Town, we were underneath the power lines, we were across the street from the chicken plant, we were behind the library, we were, uh, and ever since the zoning hearing board decision, the township and we have been working on trying to come up with a, uh, resolution. The two recommendations they made would have cost us a million dollars more per. We worked together on a joint thing, and I suggest that if the township goes ahead with going into the, uh, the old shopping center, that you, uh, investigate that also. I am not, I never was a dyed-in-the-wool, we gotta have our own busing. I wanted to do it for the most economical means, we have to provide transportation for our students, and we should do it in the most economical means, and no one has yet proven to me that we can outsource and get it cheaper. So that's, that is my recommendation, you contact A E M, you work with township, uh, you can get in, A E M also has the, uh, state concept that we did for behind the library. There's certain individuals, uh, Mr. Mashbaro did a, uh, uh, he had his route people look at some, they analyzed our routes if we ran out of Bombs Town, and by their analysis... And by their analysis, and they do a garbage truck, which is by everybody's house, you might as well pick up the kids while they're picking up the garbage. They did analysis of the, of the requirements, and they said, there's no way you can afford to do it in Bombs Town. And that was before the Affordable Care Act came on. So there's a lot of things worth it. I would be, I'd say, get AEM, get them in. I would be pleased to give you all your information. And if it was, I'm not a fan of running buses. I'm a fan of educating, but I'm also a fan of easy money wise, so I.
Great, thank you. I mean, what I'd like to do is, if we could, to wrap up the conversation, but there are a few things that I take out of this, this brief conversation. One is that we need more information before we make any firm decisions. But we also need more discussion, obviously. We all need to feel comfortable with this. And, and I think the third, I think your agrees that we, we need to pursue the option that makes the most economic sense for the school district. So, I, I think there should be sort of our guiding thoughts, kind of going, moving to the next step on this. And I hope for the next board meeting, we have an opportunity to, to hear, you know, the perspective of where we stand with our, with our attorney relative to the media case. But then going forward, you know, some good, some good thinking here, and I think some, some excellent points that we made that should be, I think, really, should, should guide our next steps. So, I, I do appreciate everyone's thoughtfulness on this. I think we are all of a mind to continue to explore this. And I am personally, my goal for this year is to try to bring this to some form of resolution. We all agree on that. This has been hanging on my ass for a long time. Any other thoughts? Okay, with that, I think we're close to meeting.
I, I, two comments.
A little late, though.
I, I apologize. They're unrelated to this discussion, I hope that gives somebody some side of belief. The first one, I believe it's appropriate for me to make public, and I'm doing so now, that I am personally related to three employees within this district. And I will disclose their names to the rest of the board, as well as to the superintendent. One of these individuals I need to, in my opinion, name publicly, and I know it may be frustrating to her, but Mrs. Kristy Haller, who is the building principal at the Rain Elementary, has significant interaction with the board. And I think it is incumbent upon me to be extra judicious when going through any type of vote or decisions that affect her or her responsibilities. I want to make that known publicly to both the public and the rest of the board and to the district as well. In other words, the message that I shared in the campaign for this position was too prompt. We need to assess the effectiveness of our programs and sharpen our investment. I'm not insinuating that our programs aren't effective now, or that we aren't assessing properly, but I want to be proven that that's the case. In this effort, we should endeavor to excel where we are strong, improve where we are weak, and end what does not offer return. Above all, my goal is to leave this board, this district, and this community better than it was when I started. There'd be plenty of opportunities for me to offer my philosophy and my voice as one of nine board members to execute our mission of inspiring the future, one-minded at times. For now, I will conclude with this. I was a little boy not long ago who started first grade with an ear-to-ear smile. And I left a young man with that same smile. My objective is to see that every student has that same experience. Thank you. Next one.
I just want to say that I will be attending PSBA's new director training on the 15th of December, so Saturday, I will be there from 8 to 3. So that will be before our next meeting. So I will bring back any information I have from that, and I'm looking forward to it.
That's fantastic, great. I hope, I hope other board members, new board members are planning on the same, because it's an excellent.
Hunter and I are going with it.
Great.
Oh, cool.
I think, I think you'll find it worth it. Anything else? Okay, we're adjourned, thank you.